Let me go ahead and call a public hearing to order for July 7th. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Cordabier.
Here.
Lamore Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Item number one, an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Devon and Becky Wells. The rezonal lots B, 1B and 1C of the Devon Wells subdivision located at 1313 Corbin Road from RS 3 MX in accordance with survey by William J. Bowden. Recommended approval by zoning commission. Josh.
They subdivided the piece of property. They wanted to rezone it to match the lots adjacent to it. They're leaving a buffer of R3 between the residence and what's there. And they wanted to have, they have a duplex that's currently there, and they want to add a little office building. So, we recommended approval.
Ms. Wells?
This is Ms. Wells, right here.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Right across the street from, right on the corner of Corbin and...
Correct.
Exactly.
Yep. So, they already have office buildings, they are ready, that they're doing business out of, so it fits there. They were courteous enough to leave a 25-foot buffer that stayed residential between the residence and where they're wanting to do their offices, so.
Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Item number two, an ordinance to increase the fuel flowage fee from 10 cents to 15 cents per gallon at the Hammond Regional Airport. David Laboue.
Evening, everyone. Introduce us at the last meeting. We're looking to close a funding gap in the airport's current budget. We're implementing a number of measures, one of which is this increase in the fuel flowage fee. Right now, we're at about a, or at least we were for fiscal year 2014, we were at about a $70,000 deficit between what the airport's total expenses are and what we're taking in via fuel flowage fee and via the rent payments that we collect. Again, the rent payments come in two forms. One is land lease, and the other are for the buildings we actually own, and we take in rent for those. This keeps us, albeit at the higher end of average, it keeps us in the average range for the fuel flowage fees for other comparable airports in the area. Obviously, you're going to see something greater at a place like Louis Armstrong International or Baton Rouge and those kind of places, but the municipal airports like Lakefront, Slidell, Abida, Covington, other competitor airports, we're right in that range right now.
Any questions for David?
What is the range? Just for curiosity.
It goes, it goes anywhere from 8, 9 cents on the dollar to 16, 17 cents.
What's the range of the fuel?
Oh, the extra, the fuel cost?
No, the actual range of the flow, flowage fee.
Right.
So, anywhere from...
9 cents on the dollar to about 17 cents on the dollar.
Yeah.
But just as far as fuel cost goes, we're still below most airports out there for the cost to a consumer.
We are, and in some cases, we're good 25, 30, depending on how the fuel fluctuations take place. And it changes on a weekly basis, but sometimes we're in the range of 40 cents.
So, how is that? Not to belabor it, but how was, just curious, how is that? How does the fuel change from airport to airport? Is that, do we actually control that cost as well?
No, it's just competition, what they decide they're going to charge.
So, what the actual airport decides to charge?
In some cases, the fuel, the fuel is bought and resold by, by the airports, in which case you don't have a fuel flowage fee because the airport is making, you know, in those cases, they're making sometimes a dollar or more on the gallon for what they're selling. But in our case, the businesses that sell fuel on the airport are two FBOs, fixed base operators in this case, Hammond, Hammond Air Center and Top Gun Aviation. They are keeping their, they are buying and reselling the fuel. Our only, our only fees that we, that we take in are from that fuel flowage fee, and they are keeping their prices competitive based on who they're buying from and how they're buying it and reselling it.
Any further questions, comments? All right, we'll move right into our regular scheduled meeting. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Cordabier.
Here.
Lamore Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Mr. Delmas Dunn, would you lead us in the prayer, please?
Oh, Lord, we come at this hour, Father, to thank you for your Son, Jesus. Father, thank you for this day. Father, we come praying for the city and all the members who are here, the city council members. We ask you to spread in them, Father, where they are weak. We ask you to give them knowledge and understanding of the things that we need to take care of. We ask you to give them the understanding of the things that the city needs to take care of. Father, as we go forward, we ask you to bless the city, the people, and we ask these blessings in Jesus' name forever and evermore. Amen.
I'd ask all veterans and military personnel to please render a proper salute. Councilman Blunt, would you lead us in the prayers, please?
(Inaudible). The United States of America, and to the republic which stands under the nation, under God, and universal liberty, justice, and...
We have any council reports?
Mayor? Sales tax for the end of the year, the fiscal year, looks good. As you see, if you look through the numbers during the course of the fiscal year, November, December, is what picks us up and catches us up when we're behind another month. If you look at what we take in annually, about 37 million, and what we spend, 39 million, if you, if you go ahead and you do the difference in what we have here, we are going into the city's fund balance approximately 500, 550,000 this year to balance the budget. That being said, that's why we're being very cautious in what we're doing. Also, one of my concerns with the roundabouts is our Christmas and holiday season because that's what makes up our sales tax. So, for this next fiscal year, that's my concern. The sales tax isn't so much what my concern is, other than those two months. The concern is what our spending is with the city. So, we're going to watch that very carefully this next fiscal year, and hopefully, we can get that budget closer to being truly balanced without going into our fund balance.
All right, do we have any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? All right, approval minutes for June 16, 2015. If you had a chance to read and review, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Sir?
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Resolutions, new business. Number one, the resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Louisiana Department of Public Safety and Corrections, Office of Motor Vehicles, and the City of Hammond for the public licensed tag agent. Lacy.
If you'll remember, we actually passed this agreement and the one that follows in the next resolution last October, when the state was looking to close our OMV office and only leave it in the parish seat in Amite. And so, to prevent that foreclosure, we entered into a partnership with Auto Title Service to, to perform and to act as a public licensed tag agent. And the state is asking us to go ahead and renew our contract now, even though we just passed it last October, just to get it consistent with their fiscal year. So, this is exactly the same contract that we passed last October, no changes other than the dates.
Any questions or comments from the council? From the public?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Item number two, resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement for public licensed tag agent with Auto Title Company. Lacy.
This agreement, again, is very similar, and it piggybacks off of the first agreement that we did. We passed this also in October, where Barbie Tallo, through Auto Title Service, came to represent and become kind of our public tag agent for Hammond, to ensure that that office stayed open and operating. So, this is the same agreement, other than changes of dates that we passed last October. This is to renew the contract only, same language, same terms, and it, it runs parallel to the state contract that the city has with the state.
Let's just ask this one question, because this is a, so, so what happens to the 3% that we collect for, that goes towards building repairs or, that part was never really kind of resolved the last, in the last, when we initially did this contract? And we've, we've talked about, I don't know if Mayor Penepinta wasn't in office at the time, but at that point, there was still that understanding of how do we really deal with that 3%?
That mainly goes to paying the rent on the building. That is a building that the, the city leases, essentially. So, that goes towards the lease payment, and that goes to internal building maintenance, goes to the janitorial contract, those kinds of items that are internal to the building maintenance, similar that we have with other buildings that the city has throughout the city.
Yeah, but isn't it a private business now?
It is a private business.
So, how does that, how do we reconcile that?
This was a business that was recommended to us by the state also.
I understand, I was, I was on the council, but I think that there was also a bucket of funds that we had excessive dollars in the account, because it wasn't, it was designed to be spent for building improvements, and so those funds were almost $180,000, if I remember correctly. And so, we're continuing to collect that every transaction, so we're using those funds for...
The vast majority of those funds go to pay the rent. Those funds had just built up over the years because there had been no building improvements made within the building.
And they did just do some massive improvements to the building. So, there's not much money in that fund at this time.
Okay. Just curious how that, how that really works, because we'll continue to collect that money forever and ever and ever, but yet, we're not, we are not really affiliated because it's now a private enterprise, right?
We still enter into a contract with the state to be the public tag agent. Then, we enter into a contract with Auto Title Services to provide that service. So, we're still a partner in this, in this agency.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further council questions? Any questions from the public?
If you're saying, if we can look into possibly getting some of those funds and bringing it back into our budget, we definitely don't mind looking into that, Andre.
Yes, the existing agreement does restrict the use of those funds.
Right, right.
Now, you know, this...
Well, the state restricted the use of the funds.
That's what I'm saying. This, yeah.
Restriction of funds. Now, when this contract expires, if we want to revisit how that's used with the state, we can do that.
Always looking for that.
Well, I just thought I would, you know, bring that up.
That's great, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Sir?
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Number three, resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Tangbo African American Heritage Museum from July 1st, 2015 to July 30th, 2016. Lacy.
This cooperative endeavor agreement enables us to enter into a partnership. It does spell out the city's benefits in this partnership and the maximum amount of funding that is allocated towards the museum according to what was budgeted in the fiscal year going forward. And Delmas Dunn is here tonight, if you have any questions about the museum itself.
And that amount was?
25,000.
And that's a reduction of...
It's a reduction of 50%. We do require invoices on everything that we pay, so we are ensuring that the city taxpayers are getting their money's worth for the museum.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Number four, resolution to approve the holiday closing schedule for non-civil service employees for fiscal year 2016. Ms. Loretta, second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, in accordance with the 2013 ordinance that requires the city to pass a resolution for non-fire and police personnel to receive holiday pay. The list of holidays is probably attached to your computers. We did add Mardi Gras for non-fire and police personnel, so we're all the same now.
Any questions, comments?
So, we can't have a city council meeting on Mardi Gras anymore, huh?
That's right.
That's great. That's great.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Number five, resolution approving Save-A-Lot, number 358, located at 113 North Morrison Boulevard, to obtain a permit to sell high-low packaged alcohol. The owner is Moraine Foods LLC. Jenny Watson.
Good afternoon. We are coming before you this afternoon to get packaged alcohol for the Save-A-Lot that's located in the Albertson Shopping Center. They have met all of the qualifications that we require, all of their inspections, and the application is all in order. So, they are here this afternoon. If you do have any questions, I'm going to ask them to come up, and you can have any questions you have, might have.
Yeah, Lamore Marshall.
Hey.
How are y'all? Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is James LaPlante. I live at 1235 Molto, Amandaville, Louisiana. I manage the Save-A-Lot.
Okay. We, we ask everyone applying for alcohol permit for the council to come for the council so we can put you on the record and ask you to make sure you understand the laws regarding sales of alcohol to minors.
Yes.
And that you understand you will be checked due various means, and that we, the chief and the city take it very seriously. So, we just, again, just like to put everybody on the record, make sure you guys understand that. I'm sure you do, you've been in business a long time.
Yes, sir.
Will you guys beer be, want to be cheaper than Albertsons, or, since you guys have a Save-A-Lot, so?
It'll be at 6%.
Ah. So, good.
It'll, it'll match Albertson's.
All right, I have a motion for...
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number six, a resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Softmark Incorporated for fiscal year 2015-16, an amount of $42,898.05 annually for Microsoft, Microsoft software and license in accordance with RFP 15-48, open on June 29, 2015. Janet Thurman.
In late June, we put out RFP 15-48 for Microsoft software and license. Our lowest bid was $42,898.05. We're asking for approval to enter a contract with Softmark for the fiscal year 2015 through 2016.
Any questions for Janet? Any public comment or questions?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Number seven, a resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Harper Metal Building Services Incorporated for fiscal year 2015-16, an amount of $108,000, to construct a metal building at 190 Maintenance Yard in accordance with RFP 15-42, open May 29, 2015.
Okay, I want to clarify, we're not asking for approval to enter into a contract for the fiscal year 2015 through 2016 with Harper Metal. We put out a RFP 15-42 for a one-time construction of a metal building at 190 Maintenance Facility in the amount of $108,000. We're asking approval to proceed with the construction.
Do we need to amend that?
Well, I mean, technically, it's a contract for services, even though it may not be writing in accordance with the RFP, so I don't think you need to amend it, Janet.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
My name is Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. I was just wondering if this falls under our ordinance for metal buildings and the facade requirements?
This isn't back, this isn't back of the 190 yard, it's to cover equipment.
Yeah.
It's not off the road, it's at least 350 feet behind the office building that we have. So, it doesn't have to be a metal facade.
Okay, all right. We, we had had questions about that in the past on Church Street, for example, and on 190 West a few years ago, and it was a lot of...
And that has a lot to do with the side facades. This is strictly a top roof to cover equipment.
I just saw that, and I thought, well, do we still even have the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we do.
Yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, as the mayor said, I think it's just a cover, it's not really a building, so Josh meets all the requirements?
When we rewrote the UDC, we actually kind of changed the metal ordinance, the metal building ordinance to be more friendly for things like this. It's, it more pertains to street-facing facades now, as well as facing residential zonings. If you don't, if you're not facing, you know, a street-side, forget what they call it, yeah, street-side facing, that doesn't have to be metal, I mean, it doesn't have to be non-metal. It can be metal. So, that, this falls under that, as well as, it's also fronting on nothing that's even sold. The perimeter is not even in the city limits back there, so.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
Thanks.
When will construction start, and when will it be finished on the local?
I will issue the PO tomorrow, and the materials will be ordered, and construction will be in as soon as the materials end, so probably within the next month.
And how long should it take to...
Probably less than a month.
Have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Number eight, a resolution authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Consulting LLC to audit the city's utilities and communication expenses and find additional savings at no cost to the city. Lacy.
We believe this is going to be very beneficial for the city, but we would actually like to table this for tonight and have it at the next meeting. We're working out just some contract languages to clarify some terms, so we'd like to table for tonight.
But this is a company that have come in, apparently, they did it for the parish, TPSO's, and also independents. They come in, they check your billing, and they get a percentage of what they may save us, but any savings in the future is ours.
I think the full proposal is actually attached.
Motion to table.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Number nine, a resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into an annual support agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for Munis Software System. Sam Richmond.
This is just for our manual, our annual maintenance agreement with Tyler Tech for Munis. We do it every year, and actually, it's Munis and Intergov now, so.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Number one, introduction to the ordinance relative to alcohol beverage and Sunday alcohol sales. Councilman Marshall.
Yeah, Mr. President, the rest of the council and the mayor, um...
Did you, did I skip something? Oh, I did, I skipped it. Final adoption, I'm sorry, excuse me. Final adoption of the ordinance. Number one, an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Devon and Becky Wells to rezon lots 1B and 1C of the Devon Wells subdivision located at 1313 Corbin Road from RS 3 MX and in accordance with survey by William J. Bowden. Recommended approval by zoning commission.
Let's move.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Number two, an ordinance to increase the fuel flowage fee from 10 to 15 cents per gallon at the Hammond Regional Airport.
Let's move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordabier.
Aye.
Lamore Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Oh, we have now introduction to the ordinance for public hearing. Number one, introduction to the ordinance relative to alcohol beverages and Sunday alcohol sales. Councilman Marshall.
Yeah, Mr. President, the rest of the council and the mayor, I just wanted to, I know that we're going to ask for this to be introduced, and I hope it gets introduced so we can discuss it in more detail later on, but I didn't want to take a couple of minutes because I know we don't get a chance to talk prior to the meeting, just, just in case anybody had any questions when we think about this for the next couple of weeks. The intent of trying to allow the, I think we have the majority of our bars, I think over 90% of our bars in downtown Hammond, and right now, we have bars that are adjacent to restaurants that have bars. We have, and they're not able to open on Sunday where restaurant bars are able to open on Sundays. And we've also allowed in the last year or two, the, all of our grocery stores to be able to also sell alcohol. We've expanded that opportunity for, for that business. And then recently, just, you know, we also, our sister city, Ponchatoula, just passed an ordinance to allow for bars to be open on Sunday. And it's really just a, something that we need to really think about. I've been thinking about, and I know we've had a lot of comments from several of the constituents in our community, the bar owners, that opening, allowing the playing field to be level, allowing them to be able to open on Sundays. You know, I was thinking this, this Sunday, just happened, this past Sunday, when we had the big soccer game, how many people watched the soccer game, and how many establishments could have benefited in downtown that were, that could have been open to handle the, the people visiting, restaurant bars or standalone bars during that event? And then also during the holiday season, it's football season, when typically, patrons like to attend their favorite spots that they want to go to, being at a restaurant bar or a standalone bar, and giving those restaurants, those bars a chance to operate. And what we did look at in the ordinance was to allow the ordinance to operate, the bars operate just like restaurants do, so their opening and closing times would be no different. They would be in the same category with restaurants, and then I know Councilman Williams, you know, when we, when we put the ordinance out, your, your concern was making sure that the zoning issue was not a problem, and I think Andre did a good job of making sure that we did keep, we, we made sure that the zoning was correct for restaurants so that would not impact future zoning requests. So, I think the ordinance is clean.[1623.82] If you guys want to have any questions about it, and I did, I think we had a couple of bar owners in the audience, if they want to maybe say a couple of words, if you'd mind.
It, it's appropriate, but I would rather wait until the public hearing.
Just, just in case, you know, they might want to make a comment that a councilman or councilwoman might want to think about over the next couple of weeks, so if you don't mind, they're here.
I mean, I guess technically, I can't stop them from talking, but again, I would, I would ask that we follow protocol for public hearing.
Okay, well, that's fine.
I mean, I know Paul's here, you'll be able to come back for the public hearing?
Yes.
Daniel, will you?
Yes, no problem.
And if there are any, if there are questions from the council, you'd be around after the meeting for a few minutes? I'd, I'd rather follow that protocol.
And I think that's appropriate, I think that's, that's a good compromise, allowing them to talk to the council.
Absolutely.
Council before we leave tonight would be, would be a good suggestion. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Motion to introduce?
Do we have a second? I would second to introduce because I do believe that, that this deserves a public hearing, so roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
No.
Janice Cordavier.
No.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Item number two, introduction of orders to amend ordinance number two thousand dash two six nine two C as regarding the City of Hammond's compensation system for the classification and pay plan. Lacy.
As we discussed when we were working on the budget for this fiscal year, this ordinance has been on the books since two thousand and is definitely one of those that we need to be revising and looking at updating. The critical parts that we are asking to revise will be that we, we want to enable city employees to have an anniversary raise of two percent for years zero to twenty-three. So when they start here, all the way through twenty-three years, and then steps twenty-four through thirty would reflect a one percent annual raise. There would be no cost of living raises outlined in the ordinance, but those could always be added by the council during appropriating a fiscal, each fiscal year. So those are the main highlights of this. We're trying to ensure that it's in compliance with state law, civil service law, and, and our local, and we've also had a lot of meetings with employees just to try to get everybody on the same page.
And the reason for doing this is very much like the, the vacation or the holiday. Everyone on the same page, all departments, civil service and non-civil service having the same benefits, rather than one getting raises when others aren't, we'll just do a blanket across the, the city for, not civil and non-civil, civil. And I think the fire department is the one, it's state law for them, so now it'll be consistent throughout the city for all employees.
Motion to introduce?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Cordavier.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Item number three, an introduction of ordinance to declare surplus and authorize the sale that items listed below to sell on govdeals.com. Janet Thurman.
Okay, we need to make a correction on the website address, it's govdeals.com, and...
Yeah, let's go ahead and amend, just to be sure we got the correct names. It should be govdeals.com.